All right, it's five o'clock. Welcome to the meeting of the Transportation Policy and Planning Board for September twentieth, two thousand and twenty-one. We do appear to have a quorum. Uh, Riva, would you please call the role?
Grant Foster. Keith Furman.
Present.
Barbara Harrington McKinney.
Present.
Randy Udell.
Present.
Christopher McKeo.
Here.
Tom Wilson.
Here.
Balthazar Deanna Satana. Margaret Bergamini. And Bedeness Lentella.
Here.
Thank you, Riva. We do have a quorum. Uh, looks like Alder Foster has joined us, and Margaret did let me know ahead of time that she wasn't going to make it. Joe, if you would please proceed with our standard virtual meeting opening statement.
Welcome to our virtual meeting. If you lose connection at any point during the meeting, you can reconnect by clicking the link or calling the number in your original email. Members, if you are able, please activate your video and keep it on for the duration of the meeting. Staff, if you are able, please activate your video when you are speaking. All panelists, that is Alders, board members and staff, have the ability to mute and unmute themselves. Please continue to use the raise hand feature when you'd like to be recognized to speak, ask questions, or request a roll call vote. Lowering your hand will take you out of the queue. Members of the public have registered to speak. The name you entered in Zoom must match the name you entered in registration. You will remain muted until called upon. The clerk will tell you when your time is up. After speaking, a member of the board may ask you a question. If you need to share documentation with the board, please send it to the email listed on today's agenda. Chair of the floor.
Thank you, Joe. Um, looks like Balthazar has also joined us. Approval of minutes from our most recent meeting, August sixteenth, two thousand and twenty-one. Thank you all for making a motion. Thank you all for making a motion for approval. Is there a second? Second by Badri, any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor bring our minutes from August sixteenth, two thousand and twenty-one. Please unmute yourselves and say aye.
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 Opposed, no? Chair believes it's unanimous. If you'd like to register a no vote, please raise your hand. Seeing no hands raised, that will go down as unanimous. Thank you. Uh, we do have one registering for public comment for items, uh, not on the agenda. Um, that is Bob Schaefer. Bob, I see you there. Um, if you're ready, you have three minutes. May begin when you are unmuted. Bob, can you hear me? Can you hear us?
All right, I'm sorry. I didn't get unmute button, and that's what I was asking about.
Oh, that's fine. You've got three minutes to begin when you're ready.
Okay. I want to give everybody an update on the, uh, TransitX Pod System, uh, that I've brought to the attention of the committee several times. The demonstration, uh, uh, route, uh, is currently being built in Boston. Uh, it, uh, I have some pictures of some of the components in the, uh, of the unit that are ready for the install. Uh, my understanding is that, uh, it will be ready for, uh, demonstration and use, uh, this year. Uh, perhaps in the next couple of months and, um, that, uh, the other, uh, uh, news about that is that, um, they, uh, there are currently agreements to build in, uh, several countries and in areas, and that I think that it would be very important uh, for Madison to get some more accurate information on this. And, uh, it is twenty-first century technology. Uh, it is the, the mode of transportation in the future and that it will far exceed the expectations of BRT at far less cost and a greater service to more areas with a faster forty-five mile an hour projected, uh, uh, movement and point-to-point, uh, movement without any transfers. So I, I will send up pictures and some more information to this about this to the, uh, committee and, and to the elders. Um, but I think that we need to revisit this and, uh, I think if Madison doesn't revisit it, that I, I think that it will be, uh, uh, not, uh, not a very good idea. Thank you.
Thank you, Bob. Are there any, are there any questions for the speaker? Walter Harrington McKinney, go ahead.
I'm sorry, I didn't have a question for the speaker. I just, um, needed to, um, inform, uh, when it comes time, I need to inform the chair of my exit at six o'clock and to ask if that would impact form.
Um, it should not, as long as, um, as no, we don't have too many others drop off, it should be fine. Thank you, Alder, for letting me in. Um, all right, assuming there are no questions for the speaker, seeing no hands raised. Um, are there any communications disclosures or recusals from members of the board? Um, seeing none, uh, we do also have, um, TC Chair Kovac with us without objection. I'd like to allow her to ask questions. You know, because in discussion, any items that she feels that, um, might be relevant. Seeing no objections, we'll go ahead with that. Um, our first item then, uh, is Legislature six, seven, four, two, four, Director's Report from Tom.
Great, thanks, Tom. Um, I won't go over all of it. I'll maybe just highlight four or five things in the Director's Report. I think high-level deal that affects us are the current infrastructure bills that are moving through Congress. We had hoped to get some earmarks for projects, both Atwood Avenue and Autumn Ridge Trail. Earmarks have been removed. They, there may be a small chance that they get reinserted through reconciliation, but may not occur. Also, we have been interacting with representatives from Amtrak because there is a desire to bring Hiawatha service to Madison and how these bills might affect that possibility and what we can do to maybe encourage passenger rail service to Madison. For Bus Rapid Transit, um, the next phase of the design contract being, was introduced, and I believe, um, will be referred to PPBB. Um, we have public involvement meetings at the end of this month, uh, on the twenty-ninth. Uh, we've had several meetings with Wisconsin DOT over BRT operations that had posed some concern in that there will be a, a small diminishment of motor vehicle level of service on that, but I think um, they're growing comfortable with proposal, and I think that will be getting to the yes. Um, as far as other things associated with transit, Governor Evers provided five point two million dollars in some of recovery monies to Metro Transit. That's a big deal. If you remember, it, one of my previous ones, the legislature actually cut the operating operating contribution to Madison Metro by fifty percent in the state budget. Uh, this allocation by the governor that's associated with it, you know, COVID and care recovery will help make up about sixty percent. The network redesign, um, we'll be having a meeting, I believe, this week on the twenty-third, and there's two documents that I feel like are quite interesting on the, on the website. I would encourage you to look at them. Uh, the graphics due to the file size are a little bit fuzzy, but I, I thought they are interesting. Interesting documents for review. I won't go too much on into DDM parking enforcement or parking garage. This, there is some information on that. Uh, the Vision Zero Action Plan is being revised. I just read through it today. I feel like it's it's good. Some of the holes that were of concern are being filled, and hopefully I think that will be before PPBB at the next meeting on October fourth. And then, um, the Complete Green Streets Tool Line Group is continuing in typology context as well as public engagement. And, um, the amendment on the PPBB's agenda for tonight. Those are kind of the highlights. Is there any questions?
Next time, we do have one registering for public comments. Um, again, Bob Schaefer. Bob, if you're ready, um, you've got three minutes. Go ahead.
Yeah, the area that I want to address is the, uh, passenger rail. I was very much involved in that when, uh, that was, uh, being addressed earlier, uh, a few years ago. And, and one of the challenges that, uh, is there that I see is depending upon how that is going to be, that everybody wanted the passenger rail to go downtown. Uh, one of the problems with that is that, um, the route to going downtown is a freight rail system right now that goes through all the neighborhoods. Uh, the projected speed at that time was forty-five miles an hour. Uh, going through all those neighborhoods, uh, that when they talked about street closures, uh, to, uh, provide better safety, that one of the, uh, things that what happened is the neighborhoods that were in that, that, uh, east area did not want to have their, uh, streets closed. Uh, the, uh, high-speed rail was at that time, and I'm not sure how, how fast this train is going to run, but was projected to come through a lean road at about eighty miles an hour. And, um, that, uh, I, I think that when, uh, we look at the rail system right now, I don't believe that there's a western exit uh, to, uh, join that route so that the trains would have to be, uh, brought in and then either turned around or back, back out to Beaver Dam. Um, and that, uh, you know, I think that what, uh, the challenges, uh, also incur is the, uh, rail system, uh, east of Madison here, uh, is, uh, very much under, um, constructed, so to say. Uh, it is not constructed for that type of passenger rail. It has to be redone. The trains are now limited at fifteen miles an hour. And the other side is that, uh, the, uh, metals recycling place, um, on the east side here uh, is, uh, using that corridor, uh, for their, um, almost, uh, all, all day long or especially in the evenings, uh, for, uh, loading their cars and so forth. So I think that there's a lot of obstacles. And, uh, I, I, I don't know that, um, that, that it would add any extra benefit um, to that, especially if it were brought downtown. So I think that it's something that, uh, in a sense, kind of sounds good, but I don't know that there, it's practical and that it's going to be a safe issue.
Thank you, Bob. Um, are there any questions for the speaker? Seeing none, uh, questions for Tom on the Director's Report? Chris, go ahead.
Thanks. Uh, thanks for the report, Tom. Um, I'm wondering, since there is talk about Amtrak and it's all sort of just talk right now. Are the folks you're talking to giving any indication about realistically what, how those projects might be chosen and what that process would look like at this point?
Yeah, I, I think, um, first, the project has a very different look than what was proposed, you know, with the high-speed rail. So a lot of the concerns brought up by, uh, Bob Schaefer are probably more directed towards a previous project than this right now. The, uh, Amtrak is very interested in extending Hiawatha because it's a very successful line. And there is some, um, opportunity to understand what the infrastructure costs are associated with that. I think some of the details have to do with how what are the programmatic and policy restrictions within the bill that, um, apply to local match, or how can Amtrak use its monies towards corridors that are less than seven hundred and fifty miles and, um, sponsor, or state-sponsored type. So there, there are things that Amtrak needs to you know, is looking for in the current transportation bills that give them a little bit more flexibility with their monies. There are, Amtrak does seem to have high interest in Madison as a potential market. And I, I will say that while current bills that are being discussed don't have all of the passenger rail monies that were desired, they have a lot passenger rail monies. In fact, considerably more than what has been seen in the past decade or so. So there is opportunity.
Thanks.
Alder Foster, go ahead.
Thanks. Uh, thank you, Tom. Uh, really appreciate these reports. Um, one is just a quick comment on, uh, Lake Street, uh, proposals that finance next week. I just wanted to make sure that, um, TC members um, have gotten the invite for that meeting as well. I know in the, the resolution that we passed, we had specifically called for that to happen so they can participate in that, um, discussion, including any closed session, um, discussion on that. So just wanted to make sure that that didn't get missed and that that will be happening. Um, and then my question for you was, um, the East Washington Streetlight Data, if you could just speak a little bit more to the, the reductions that you've seen there? And, and if you could just give a little more details on the tubular markers as a threshold treatment, uh, what that means?
I'm writing down. Yes, uh, so Jeremy Mash is, um, preparing some, uh, streetlight data presentations that will be given to the PC. Uh, anodally, I just got wind of a, a couple of the spreadsheets, and one example is like at the Yarra Bridge. Per, you know, in twenty twenty, eight percent of the traffic traveling over the Yarra Bridge was traveling above forty miles an hour. And in twenty twenty-one, only one percent was traveling over forty miles an hour. So, uh, you know, those are the types, things that we're trying to decrease is the, the upper of those outliers. So, um, the average speed seemed to not have changed as much, but more of the upper range. Seems to have been pushed more towards and then the tubular markers, um, we're, I don't want to call it a, a test, but there is a study out chicken that, um, has tested putting a tubular marker in between the lane line as a threshold treatment for uncontrolled intersection. And they found that the marker, um, decreased speed considerably those locations. And so we've been collecting speed data at a uncontrolled intersection on East Washington. And so what we'll do is we will, I think it's this week, put up tubular markers for four hours and monitor the traffic and collect the speed data. And then if it's successful, we'll try a longer period. There could be unintended consequences, uh, that we just want to be very cautious with, like for instance, one tubular markers, temporary ones, so they could be, you know, maybe a bus could tip them over and then they get run over. That could be bad, or, um, some drivers might view it as a game and actually speed up, right? You know, the, oh, look at new game. So, um, we want to explore it as something that could by providing a horizontal constraint could slow down cars at the threshold of an intersection. So, uh, shows promise. There isn't a lot of literature on it. We want to be cautious in the implementation. But we want to see, we want to test it out.
That sounds good. Thanks for the additional details and, um, maybe we could just make sure to either get a, a link to the materials or the discussion at TC, um, on it, um, for here, because I do, I mean, any, any specific changes obviously are relevant to specific streets, but I think from a policy perspective, um, it's really important for us to understand how much does changing the speed limit actually affect things? Um, really, really has a lot to do with our decisions around twenty is plenty, et cetera. So I think it'd be great to make sure we get some of that data as well.
If you saw the graphs, I think it was, uh, the graphs were incorrect more than you would think.
Yeah, that'd be great to share here as well, I think. Thank you.
Hold it beyond you. Go ahead, please.
Yeah, Tom, I just had a quick question. Um, um, I love to hear the fact about the Amtrak. Uh, I, I've read something that they were coming to Madison, um, anyway, so I'm just wondering, you know, it sounds like a great idea with all the tracks. Madison behind the airport, and I heard there was a study done that was very, pretty quick as far as, uh, the studies that were done going from east, uh, east to west. Uh, I'm just wondering, it, does it, um, does it, is that a different train system that, that is, um, trying to work with, um, say like the North Port, uh, corridor, Troy Drive, as far as the bridge over there? Uh, because I heard there was, um, I don't know, there's not a good, uh, I don't know, relationship. Is that a different train system than the Amtrak, or is that the same train system?
Yeah, actually, I, uh, I don't know. It would be the Union Pacific going out of town, so I, I can check on that for you. There was, um, actually, a considerably large study done for the, for the Midwest Rail Initiative. And the Madison Station looked at five different routes. The route that went downtown was selected. However, um, this is a, a different service. It's not necessarily high-speed. We have put a hundred and twenty thousand in the executive capital budget to study routes and potential station location. So I we would probably re-initiate or maybe a better way is to say refresh some of the work that was done in two thousand and eleven and two thousand and eight. And, and conditions are a little bit different now. Some of the work that was needed for the Midwest Rail Initiative has been formed. They're talking about a lower speed. And then I think there is a definite desire not to stop in Madison, but to eventually point this train so that it goes towards Minneapolis. So a lot of work was done in two thousand and eleven. Conditions are a little bit different now than they were.
Thank you.
Are there any further questions for Tom on the Director's Report? Right, seeing none, uh, we will move on then to Legislature six, six, seven, three, seven, a resolution authorizing the finance director or their designate to execute an amendment to increase the funding of a competitively selected service contract with Tool Design Group for Services and Consulting related to complete streets implementation.
Do you need an explanation of this, or is this before?
Why don't you give a real brief, Tom, just in case anyone's not caught up?
Yeah, so the, um, uh, PPBB has been the guiding committee for the Complete Green Streets, um, initiative. And it, we had the initial contract with Tool Design. What moving into that project, it became apparent that if we're looking at how to allocate right-of-way and street space, we also had to con- include the green component. And so and then we put in the capital budget, I, I believe it was about eighty thousand dollars to provide additional funding for tool to include the green component, distributed green and infrastructure stormwater in the study. And so this is just kind of a and that budget was approved, so this resolution just allows us to go ahead and move forward with that amendment so that the green infrastructure and then a little bit more public engagement. Awesome. With
Thank you, Tom. Are there any questions for Tom on this item? Seeing, I was looking for a motion, um, recommend adoption.
Alder Foster?
I would approve the option.
Thank you. Is there a second? Randy? Any discussion? Alder Foster, do you want to speak to your motion? Okay, seeing no hands up for discussion on the motion to recommend adoption of a resolution authorizing the finance director or their designate to execute an amendment to increase the funding of a competitively selected service contract with Tool Design Group for Services and Consulting related to complete streets implementation. All those in favor, please unmute yourselves and say aye.
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 Opposed, no? Chair believes it's unanimous. If you'd like to register a no vote, please raise your hand. Seeing no hands raised, that will go down as unanimous. Thank you. Our next item is Legislature six, six, nine, one, eight, Greater East Town Area Plan.
Good evening, everybody. I'm Linda Horvath with the City of Madison Planning Division, and I'm here with Ryan Jownley, my colleague. We're here to present, um, our draft Greater East Town Area Plan as it is at this point. Um, we're about three quarters of the way through the process, and so we're looking forward to hearing what you might have to say this evening. And we'll welcome you to also provide feedback as, uh, the process continues on. I'm going to share a presentation and then we'll open it up for discussion. Can everybody see the presentation? Okay, thank you. Appreciate it. We're going to go over the plan as it is right now, hit some highlights of participation findings. I'll show you some draft guiding principles and draft concepts for land use, streets, sites, sidewalk network, BRT, parks and open space, and then share an anticipated timeline for the project, and then again, open it up to questions and discussion. The twenty eighteen comprehensive plan, um, shows land use for this area. And we are trying to get a fifty-fifty mix of peripheral area development and infill and redevelopment over the next twenty years. Um, this area, as well as the West Town Mall area, have been designated as growth priority areas in the comp plan. Um, so we are preparing these, uh, mall plans to transition these audio, largely auto-oriented commercial, um, areas into mixed-use activity centers. Um, our public participation for the mall plans picked off just as COVID hit in March, two thousand and twenty. So we pivoted, um, our largely robust in-person process to one that, that was mostly web-based. Lots of different Zoom meetings, uh, we met with the mall owners, did, uh, what we called Mall Madness Virtual Prioritization on our webpage. Uh, met with real estate professionals and business owners, um, through our consultant, short Elliot Hendrickson. We had an interactive website, a mapping process where people could go and, um, put, uh, marks on a map and say what they wanted, uh, to, to change in the area. And we've hosted a number of different methods to reach traditionally underrepresented groups that, that don't often participate in our planning projects. Key findings from the underrepresented groups are shown. Um, affordability is critical, as you might imagine, for both housing and businesses as the areas change over time. Uh, folks also focused on entertainment, uh, wanting more, uh, types of entertainment in these areas. Um, development that's more equitable, racially diverse and inclusive, uh, collaboration between nonprofits and government. Um, ownership models, uh, with people of color who own businesses, not just affordable spaces, and smaller buildings with character. Uh, we held some virtual meetings back in May of this year and, uh, largely found through polling during the meeting series that we're more on the right track than the wrong track with, with our drafts. Five guiding principles are, are, uh, something that we developed based on a lot of the feedback that we've heard. And these guiding principles are meant to kind of frame up the recommendations as we continue to develop them over the next several months. Creating a place, um, is one of our primary guiding principles. We want a new complete neighborhood in this area with a variety We want a new complete neighborhood in this area with a variety of housing choices and activity centers. Um, those activity centers should re- uh, reflect the cultural diversity that's there now. Um, but also that will come to the area over time. We're focusing on mobility with the plans, um, equitable access to transit, bike and ped facilities and increased street connections. And planning density along that upcoming bus rapid transit corridor on East Wash. Community wealth building is also critically important, uh, quality living wage job and opportunities, affordable housing and spaces. Um, centering nature and sustainability. We've got that beautiful Starkweather Creek corridor, um, along the southern edge of the mall area. Um, and we want to see more green, uh, throughout the area as the area develops over time. The lower left image shows you the grayed out areas, uh, which are, uh, the impervious surface that exists there today. Um, and the lower right image shows you that we're doing especially poorly with canopy cover in the area. And we think we can do a lot better as the area changes over time. Resiliency is our fifth guiding principle. Um, we want to ensure that all systems and features are adaptable, um, to change in uncertain economic times. Uh, we want to help create more opportunities for the adaptations that you see in the images. Um, global food market, uh, is an adaptation of what was Babies R Us at the East Town Mall area. Um, the urban, um, adventure park, uh, was Toys R Us. And so we want to continue to help. Create and encourage those kinds of opportunities moving forward. The comp plan, uh, which I showed earlier, the land use in that plan is showing largely regional mixed use for this area and general commercial. Uses, uh, we want to drill down even further, uh, in further detail with this plan with land use. Um, back in May, um, we showed this land use draft, uh, again, based on a lot of input we've been receiving and work with, with other city agencies. Um, we're trying to encourage more residential in the area. So you see, uh, medium residential kind of encircling, uh, regional and. Community mixed use. Uh, we also, uh, put some low, medium residential designations, um, kind of hugging the Starkweather Creek corridor. Uh, we've been meeting, we met with the Alder over the last couple of months. Um, we've met with friends of Starkweather Creek. And, uh, as I mentioned, have those Zoom meetings back in May with the public. And also been meeting with other fellow city agencies. And so we've updated this map and we want to share that with you, uh, this evening. For your, uh, feedback on this as well as the transportation network. Here's our revised draft as it, as it exists right now for land use. We changed, oh, hop over this, this slide which shows you, uh, some of the changes. And, and some of the reasons why we made the changes, I'll, I'll discuss those. Area one, uh, was medium residential and we switched that over to community mixed use. In part to take advantage again of that bus rapid transit that's gonna be coming up in Washington by twenty twenty four. Um, area two, uh, again, we met with the Alder on these. And so some of these changes reflect, uh, that. That Alder's, uh, issues and concerns and some public feedback. Um, area two was general commercial. That's the area with Target, um, over on Lean Road. That we've changed to community mixed use, um, again, to kind of, uh, push a little bit more of a mix of uses. Uh, areas four and five, uh, and actually three as well, uh, changed those back to what they were in the comp plan. From low, medium residential and push that low, medium residential over into area six. And again, we're hoping that this will be a complete neighborhood with, uh, multiple types of housing for people to choose from. Um, and continued commercial as well. Our natural features map is showing, as you would imagine, uh, the natural features are, are really, um, kind of hugging that Starkweather Creek corridor. Um, you see in this image, uh, we've got a two hundred foot buffer, um, around that Starkweather Creek. And that was requested by our stormwater engineers. Uh, as you may know, there's a watershed study that just got underway for the Starkweather Creek corridor. So we're trying to, um, you know, work with our engineers, even though that just started as, as we, uh, continue to develop our plan. Parks and open space, this is an evolving proposal. We've been working with our parks department. Uh, also met with Board of Parks to get some feedback. And so this map is, is evolving as early as, or as recently as this afternoon. Some changes have been made to it. Uh, but this is the public, public version as it stands. So we want to again, try to increase green space in this area. And so working with parks on how to do that. Where you don't see green, uh, where the mall is now and where the big box area is. Kind of over more toward the, the interstate. We want to try to figure out how can we, um, increase green space as this area evolves over time. BRT investment is coming, uh, metro route restructuring, possibility of eighteen thousand new residents in this area. Um, as we see from our MPO projections and many new employees added in here as well. Um, there's added pressure or will be, um, even more added pressure on East Washington as these changes happen. And so we're going to be recommending in the plan that the corridor study be done, uh, to try to see what else could be done in this area. We understand that traffic engineering will be improving the intersections where these BRT stops. Um, will be located in those kind of, um, aquiloping, uh, dots. So many changes are coming, um, but we think that maybe a, a corridor study might be, um, in order for the area as well. It's, it's very tough to cross now for pedestrians and it's, it's something that we want, uh, hopefully to be addressed. Here's our draft potential street network. Um, and so this is, uh, showing you in red earlier phases. And those earlier phases are largely over the top of, um, par- of parking lots and, um, internal driveways. So those would be a little bit easier to develop in an earlier phase. And the later phases are shown in kind of that purple dotted color. Um, what we're trying to do with this is break down what are super blocks into smaller, more human scale blocks. Um, where new development could occur over time. Um, also want, uh, these streets obviously to have, uh, really good sidewalks, uh, for the pedestrian network. And also, uh, bike facilities as, as the area changes. Now we're gonna show you some street cross-section ideas and these are just, uh, you know, uh, early ideas. On how eventually, uh, streets could potentially be designed, um, that Green Street, uh, study that. Tom mentioned, of course, as these streets are developed, they will be designed in coordination with the Green Streets principles. Um, that we're showing here with East Town Boulevard, uh, changing that up, keeping it as a two-way left turn lane, um, type of approach. Um, but adding in protected bike lanes, um, on either side, there are bike lanes now, but we feel protected bike lanes would be hugely beneficial. But just based on the feedback we're hearing from people who try to bike in the area and adding parking as well along the street if possible. Uh, to create more parking for the, um, added development that's expected to occur in the area. High Crossing is a, a major road, obviously, um, that comes to the area and we're recommending that, that. That street be connected through as development happens over time. Uh, hoping to, to get some space for food trucks possibly and maybe even, um, a bike lane. A two-way bike lane on one side of the street that would be separated, um, from, from the traffic. Zire Road is, um, kind of a major road that carries a fair amount of traffic through the area. Um, and looking at, uh, trying to make that a little bit more urban with a two-way left turn lane potentially to help people get to the businesses. Um, but then also again, separated bike lanes along the sides. The sidewalk network, um, that you're, we're showing here in purple is what exists today. Um, obviously, as new streets are built, we would anticipate that all of those grayed out streets, the darker gray, which is the earlier phases. And the dotted gray, which would be laser, later phases would include sidewalks. Um, uh, the kind of lighter, uh, pink is, is what we're showing as future sidewalk extensions. Along what, uh, exists as streets today. And again, uh, we, we do know that traffic engineering is planning on improvements to East Washington in particular. To help people get across to those BRT stations. Um, and so again, we, we hope that a corridor study could, could be done in concert with that. The bike network that we're showing, um, we've got what exists today, uh, in red for off-street. And in blue for on-street facilities. Um, planned in purple is what our MPO and Department of Transportation have in their plans. Uh, today, uh, planned in purple are the off-street facilities. And this, this map, we apologize, is a little confusing. Um, as we, this is a draft and we're trying to continue to improve upon it. Um, the lighter pink dotted lines are showing you new bike facilities and potential over the top of potential new streets. And so again, we're trying to make this area, uh, a little bit more human scale by breaking down the blocks a bit. Um, and adding in, uh, as much as possible, uh, bike and ped friendly facilities. Now I'm going to show you a draft conceptual development model, and this is based on our proposal for land use from May of twenty twenty one. So this will be updated. It's just meant to show you, um, kind of how this area could evolve over time. And, and the scale of the development that, that could occur as it, as it develops. Here we're showing you, um, potential phase one with BRT and infill on existing lots. And I'll just click through this, new streets and new development. Partial mall demo, if, if part of that, uh, goes away potentially. And then potential phase four, um, is really showing you, uh, a lot of what looks. You know, we see around the country with mall redevelopments where, um, you've got that green corridor down the middle. Um, and we would like to see housing and commercial mix building up around that. And have that kind of as an urban plaza organizing space down the middle, should the mall eventually in twenty, thirty years or, or maybe it will never go away. But, uh, we want to make sure that we think about that possibility over time. The estimated timeline for our project, um, you know, August and September are these phase two board committee and commission meetings. Uh, going to yours, uh, will be at, um, the Housing Services or Housing Strategies Committee on Thursday. Um, going to Plan Commission on October fourth and EDC will be invited to come to that meeting. Um, we'll be drafting the plan document, uh, during October and early November, we'll be doing more public meetings with a new draft. Um, and then introducing the plan for eventual review and adoption, um, in December. Um, we're, we're targeting a hopeful February adoption by the council as a part of the comp plan for this plan. So now I'm going to stop and, um, ask if anybody has any questions on what I've presented so far. Or if you want to just jump right in and, and providing ideas that you might have for changes or things we may have missed.
Thanks, Linda. Um, before we do that, now we do have one registered for public comments, um, Bob Schaefer. I see you're still with us. Um, you have three minutes. We begin when you're ready.
Yes, I am. And, um, in between, uh, the, uh, excellent job that the city staff did with presenting this. To the community, uh, I applaud them, uh, very good ideas. Uh, one of the, uh, things that I also attended recently was, uh, the, um. Old, uh, motel, um, Tower Johnson's, I guess, is being, uh, perhaps purchased. Uh, to be renovated, uh, and to, um, uh, of various, uh, levels of, of, of. Home or, uh, whatever, uh, rentals or room or, uh, our, uh, apartment. Um, one of the thi- things that came up in that is, uh, that the concern that, uh. That they have i- in terms of the crossings of East Washington. And that, uh, the, uh, the, the crossings that are needed are not necessarily. Uh, lighted or signalized crossings, uh, because that, uh, what is expected is that. The, uh, people that are on the north side of East Washington. Um, that especially if you have kids that are coming over across the street, that kids don't often pay attention to lights and things like that. And, uh, it was, the thought came up was, uh, the need possibly some overpasses. Uh, because that, uh, we want to do what we can. East Washington is very busy. It's, is a, um, US highway. And that, uh, we want to make sure that, uh, we, uh, have safe travel. Right now, the people on the north side of East Washington, uh, northeast, northwest side, that, uh, they're sort of landlocked. And that, uh, we need to make that a better access thing. Um, that, uh, one of the things, uh, about the East Spring area, um, right off of, uh. Uh, Zire Road there, um, that area had been looked upon in the past for, uh, some type of, uh, commercial. One of the things that they found out is that apparently it's still quite a bit of wetlands in there. And so I think that a lot of things have to be taken into consideration, uh, in doing that. Uh, that build out. Um, so I, I think that, um, they're on, on, basically on the right track. But I think that we need to look at things a little bit more closely as to what is the safest way to accomplish things? And what is the most efficient use and how, how we can integrate that, uh, commercial and residential area. So that it adds a, um. It, it adds positive value to the city of Madison and especially as a prime entrance into the city. On East Washington Avenue by people who come into town to visit. We want them to see Madison as being a. Uh, a, a community that, uh, is, uh, vibrant and, uh, and easy to access. And so I think that there's a lot of things that are going on there that will need further discussion and, uh, and thought. In terms of, of what's the best way to handle things.
Thank you, Bob. Are there any questions for the speaker? Seeing none, um, questions or comments, uh, for Linda? Oliver Foster, go ahead.
Thank you. Thanks for the nice presentation, Linda, and all the good work. Do you, was there any? Investigation in, in creating any additional. Access points either, uh, for, for all modes or, or just head bike, uh, between. Um, for the west and the east access points on the south side of the planning area. So it, it looks like there is, there was a potential future connection of bringing Parkside Drive. Down to, uh, kind of Sycamore area. Um, but then it's just a huge, uh, kind of expands all the way over to, to Thompson. As your next way to really connect this whole East Town area to Mayfair Park and Burke Heights below. I know there's some challenging topography and wetlands and rail lines and all kinds of stuff in there, but it seems like. Um, if, if it were possible to have some sort of future connection, street connection somewhere in the middle. You know, in the Walsh Road kind of area would be really, really valuable. Was that explored at all already?
Um, not, uh, no, I don't think we went that far with it. So we can mark that down. And add it to our, our list for next week's meeting. To make, put that under consideration. So I, I appreciate that comment.
Thanks. Yeah, great. I, I think that could really do something great for those neighborhoods and connect up the kind of commercial area. Walmart and all that sort of stuff, if we could get another, uh, connection in there. And, and then my comment was, um, I, I kind of shared it before in the past, but, um. In terms of the, the. Right-of-way needs, um, so one of the things that often happens when we do these, these plans, we've got, I think we've, we've marked lines showing. We want future bike facilities in these areas. Um, you've got some good cross-sections of some of the busier streets that you're already thinking about, uh, what, you know, what those bike facilities might look like. But then there's, um. There seems to be a bit of a gap in the, like, plating process. We, you know, we adopt the plan and then somebody actually comes in with a concept to do some redevelopment. And there's a, you know, there's a proposed plating. And then engineering, I think, is, is often the one that's, you know, looking at the proposed right-of-way dedications for those. And they're often, I think they might go through Plan Commission, but they're, they don't come through Transportation Commission normally. And, and we sometimes end up getting stuck where there's not enough space to put the kinds of, um, all ages and abilities or low-stress bike facilities that we would actually want. Especially on the busier streets. So my question is, is there a way for maybe, um, engineering and traffic engineering staff? To look really specifically at, at, at all the proposed and future streets. Um, you know, do their best to, to estimate, uh, expected motor vehicle volumes on those streets. And then get some actual numbers down for. And then get some actual numbers down for this IRE right-of-way with for these different streets? So that they're already included on the on the plan? So that when folks come with with class, we can kind of just easily reference that and make sure we don't get right-of-ways that are too skinny to accommodate the kinds of facilities that we want in the future.
Sounds like a very smart approach. And I I imagine, I don't know if Tom wants to speak to that. I mean, we we certainly will talk to our TE and engineering colleagues about that because we we regularly work with them on creating the plans. So I I appreciate the the comment.
Okay, yeah, I think it would be, it would be great. I know it doesn't, we don't quite have those systems, at least formally, set up today. And I, just from my time on Transportation Commission, I know I was surprised to see, you know, class that end up getting adopted that then tie our hands and now we're we're essentially dealing with brand-new streets with the same kind of constraints that we're often faced with reconstruction where we can't actually go back and change it. And if we would have just thought about it, you know, two years earlier when we approved the plan, we could have saved ourselves a lot of grief. So I think if there's an opportunity for for engineering and TE staff, really look, you know, take that deep dive now and get it, get it locked in both the plan as well as, I think, updating our official map would be the other thing that I know we're starting to think a little bit more in terms of updating our zoning districts and and hopefully updating the official map. It's the other piece that we're looking at doing along with the with these big plan adoptions. And it'd be great to just do that all now while we're thinking about it and it's fresh in our minds. Thank you.
Yes, thank you. And I appreciate that you brought up official mapping because that that is a question. If people want to comment on that with the street network that we've proposed so far. Are there streets on that proposed network that you feel warrant being officially mapped with this planning process? Because that that's something that is being considered, for example, with the Odana area plan right now. And we would consider it here as well.
Well, I still have the floor. I'll just say the one that one that does stand up for me is that kind of extension of Parkside. You know, it'd be a really valuable connection, even if it's only only a ped bike. But a real, do not have to go over to East Washington to connect the Mayfair Park neighborhood. So that's one that I would, I would put on the list to consider.
Chris, go ahead.
Thanks. Yeah, this is really great stuff. So thank you. I guess, as I'm looking at it, I'm sort of drawn to details. And I know I'm sort of pushing the limits of what we can do with a plan. But just in terms of making sure that BRT and East Wash, East Wash are a success. I'm just sort of wondering what can be done within the plan to ensure that really that dense transit rain development happens close to those stations. So I know it talks about building heights, but not really density. You know, so to the extent that we could end up with like towers within parking lots, I think we'd want to avoid that kind of thing. And then just like design guidance on making sure that buildings are fronting the road. And that you're really creating that walkable transit oriented space. But yeah, otherwise, it's really great.
Thank you.
Oliver Hanks, you're up next. Go ahead, please.
Thank you very much. Linda, I'd like to ask a question in in terms of the East Town Comprehensive Plan and all of the the impact of the development and transportation corridors. Zire Road was depicted on your map as well. And with all the discussion about Zire Road, has that impacted the Comprehensive Plan in any way? Have you had to make any adjustments or allowances? And I'm very specifically talking about, and I just need to put it out there, the proposed men's shelter. Has that changed or altered any of the design plans and the direction that you're going in terms of making that corridor walkable, bikeable, and all of those other things that you mentioned in your report?
We're certainly very much focused on making sure the whole area becomes more walkable and bikeable. And in particular, you know, for a potential homeless shelter, that that's that's a big thing to consider. As well as the things that Bob Schaefer had brought up, you know, with the hotel being converted. Those things are very much on our mind as we're continuing to develop, excuse me, develop the plan. So I I appreciate that comment. Is is that what you were asking? But as as, just to continue, I mean, as as development proposals do come forward, and there have been some, including the men's homeless shelter and and some others as well. We we do take those things into consideration as we evolve the plan.
Any questions, Oliver Hanks?
Okay, so yes, that's the direction that I wanted to hear is that you're taking all of these things into consideration as you're really developing the the design of the East Town Comprehensive Plan. And those are, so adjustments are going on regularly. Is that what I hear?
That's correct. Yes.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Are there any further questions for Linda? I'm seeing none. It looks like we will be seeing this again in January, if I remember the timeline correctly.
That's correct, yes.
So if if folks do have, you know, answers to any of these questions or comments, you know, between now and then, I expect they can reach out to you, Linda. Or if they can't find your contact info, they can send it to myself or Tom and we'll forward it on to you, Linda.
Yes, and other other colleague on the project, Rebecca Canary, you can also reach out to Rebecca. So Rebecca and I can field your questions or get the right answers for you.
Thank you. And just a reminder for folks that this, the presentation is attached in Legis使, so if you are looking for this information, it is on the PDF attached to the, well, just our file. All right. Thank you again, Linda.
Thank you.
All right. Our next item then is Legis使67426, Executive Capital Budget Highlights.
Great. Thanks, Tom. I'm a little bit unsure on how how much detail to provide on this because many may have seen this already with finance committee budget. So I'll, I'll try and provide the bike background without perhaps bliding boring those who have seen this already. So for transportation, the the big deal is the East West Bus Rapid Transit. We were recommended by the USDA funding in May 2021. That money hopefully will be appropriated this fall by Congress. It's $166 million total cost. That's about $6 million more than our original estimate due to just really inflationary pressures in the market right now. Hundred and forty-two million is in 2022 budget request, which 70% is federal money. We did put some new program with funding for design in 2023, four million. Then also we added $120,000 for intercity passenger rail station and corridor. Description focuses on the rail station, but it really also needs to include a little bit of a corridor. If we look at the on the bus rapid transit for East West, the blue represents federal. Gray is other. And then the orange is borrowing. Yeah, green is in-kind contributions and yellow is cash and borrowing. If we look at it from a pie chart, that helps provide a little bit more of a order of magnitude of where is most of this money? So you can see the 70% that is blue. So that's federal dollars. Some of that has to do with grants that we've received for bus facilities as well as the yellow actually, the orange is local borrowing, 13 million. Green is a local in-kind contribution. So we are allowed to use property contributions as part of our local match. And so that greatly reduces the amount of actual borrowing that we have to do. So this spring, council and the board allow the use of the Brayton Lot as a joint development. We will use it construction staging activities and then it will be redeveloped in a transit supportive use. And then also the West Transfer local tip contributions is 20 million. That's for TID 46, which really represents the University of Research Park area. About half of that's in cash and half of that's in borrowing. And then the other is this three month. Traffic engineering, traffic engineering has series of capital expenses. You can see them all there. Perhaps the two larger ones have to do with John Nolan Drive lighting and then also Safe Streets. Major changes. A new program was added to the capital improvement plan for the purchase and replacement of equipment used to support traffic engineering yield operations. John Nolan Drive Lighting Project has increased $1 million through the increased costs with enhancements. So we have the lighting, which when that lighting was installed, it was considered state of the art. Now it's obsolete. But also there's a new tunnel ventilation. The Safe Streets Madison is really a direct result of this committee and the Transportation Commission working together, come up, buying a series of programs. That includes the traffic calming as well as other programs. There was, so that amounts to about $2 million per year, that joint program. An additional $1 million is included in over 22 and 23 for bicycle and has the 20 is plenty project is added to the tip. And that will fund the signage for to initiate the lowering the speed, default speed limit neighborhood 20 miles. We have two pilot programs that are training right now. We have a lot of good comments on that. Not all of them. Lot we do. Highlight of the Safe Streets Madison recommendation from the Traffic Calming Committee. Here again, dad solidifies several existing capital programs, about $2 million. It's a neighborhood traffic management program, the Safe Rides School pedestrian bicycle enhancement. Yang, when he presented to the Finance Committee, included themes that were not necessarily budget related, but helped the Finance Committee understand the pressure. Spoke quite a bit about the impact forward nineteen, which really affected the number of speed plans that we've got. And then with racial equity and social justice. I think Yang and his equity teams, quite cognizant of how we are distributing investments and ways that we can distribute some of those investments under represented communities who often might say may not be as vocal, advocating for any of it. Kind of more reaching out to the NRT team with projects there. So like to build on the success of the existing program, Vision Zero, Lady version shared. And then there are the new programs, which we've already opened, Safe Street. If we look at Metro Transit, a lot of Metro Transit finishers have really kind of been transferred to the BRT. We are using some of their funding as our local map. The one change is transit coaches previously. There was not going to be any transit coach purchases in 2022. Instead, we were going to delay those as part of the BRT. However, the VW settlement monies that were available to the state. There was Amex's monies and there were relatively few applicants. So we will be doing those VW settlements. So those will be, that represents 2022. In 2025, the transit coach monies really will be hopefully focusing not on fossil fuel buses but more on what went the wrong direction. Major changes. Transit coaches, we spoke of, leased budget in 2025, purchasing purchase of electric buses. Transit system upgrades, I've already explained this to the PPDB, I believe it was May. But right now, Metro Transit is contributing $7 million of the rescue funds we receive for the BRT. And then $7 million in local borrowing, we moved from the BRT, provide system upgrades, which is to be split over the 22 through 25 years. So that $7 million is really going to focus on improvements and help transit efficiency signals, apps dedicated lanes. And that probably will be the one of the funding mechanisms to implement the network redesign. The network redesign is likely to require small capital improvement throughout the city. That $7 million probably be instrumental in that. I'm going to bypass that and the parking. Parking capital budget is relatively modest, focuses on vehicle replacement. Which includes product and, no, so you can see that that is that. That being said, they have something on the horizon that's really kind of a bigger deal. There's no significant changes to the vehicle replacement program. However, the Lake Street Garage Replacement Project is recommended to remain on the horizon. However, it's likely to get paramount discussion from committees, finance. Oliver Foster just requested that PCB invited that as well. And actually, probably in the media. These are renderings of the seven different proposals and the posers. If you can, I think I put the link in the director's report of where you can review their proposals. They all kind of approached the problem a little bit differently. There's about three or four different evaluation teams that have rated them. And I think that will be presented to the Finance Committee on Monday. I don't, I could be mistaken, but I don't think that there's any census yet on a recommendation yet. There are some inclinations with some of these. And then continuing. One has to do with the role of the Sail Street facility. Currently, traffic engineering and parking operations are housed in the Sail Street facility, which is just off of John Nolan Drive. I don't know. Can you see my marker? It's right here. Is where it is. Is where it is. There was some thought of moving the Parking Enforcement Operation Officers to a facility on Pennsylvania Avenue. Over right now, it seems like the capital cost associated with that short-term lease are relatively high. Others are suggesting that perhaps we could put more buildings here at Sale Street. How is the Parking Enforcement Operations here? This, this facility, I believe is on the horizon list. It's kind of up in here, but this is a question that needs to be addressed for both traffic engineering and we don't really have answers, but we do have questions and we just need to kind of understand how to move forward. As an alternate note, directly adjacent to where the VFW post that will become a housing project. Redeveloped as a housing project. So that's kind of the end of the brief overview question.
Randy, go ahead.
Tom, I want to, I want to thank you again for presenting. You mentioned early on that you've given this before and you're not sure as to what to present, but I think any, any successful project, you need a successful financial plan and this lays that out, which I appreciate very much. But I'd like to go back to slide nine, I know you touched on it. And regarding Metro Transit and you talked about transit coaches, twenty twenty-two versus twenty twenty-five, thirteen point five million to thirteen point two, why that, why nothing twenty twenty-three, twenty-four? Is that what you referenced as far as leaving fossil fuels, maybe an electric vehicle? Can you just clarify that? I'm curious.
Yeah, so as I mentioned, much of Metro Transit's capital budget has been transferred to the BRT project. And so we are buying forty-two BRT bus, twenty-three, twenty-four. Of those, a forty-two, two-thirds of them are electric. So the funding that we're using for much of that, which is some of our federal funds used for bus. We're using those as a, as a match, the small start. So, you know, a BRT bus is a bus, right? And so instead of buying regular buses, twenty-three, twenty-four, we're using, we're buying BRT bus twenty-three and twenty-four. And we're using purchase of those buses part of our match to the
Got it. Thank you.
Alder Furman, go ahead.
Thank you, Chair. Tom, can, I'd like, I'd like you to address a little bit about the cost for the twentieth plenty program. Obviously, budgeting is always, is never, never easy and we don't have, we never have as much funds as we'd like. Can you, can you just share with us a little bit of your thoughts on, on bang for buck? You know, spending six hundred and fifteen thousand dollars on signs. You know, obviously you not very, very little of the projects that we have to do that make a difference are inexpensive. But that, that certainly is a lot of money for one particular program. So if you could just give a little bit more insight to this board, you know, bang for buck for, for that investment.
Yeah, so I'll, I'll do a high level. It is a one-time expenditure. And what we will be doing is we'll be changing speed limit signs in neighborhoods, but then we also increase the frequency of those signs. And it's meant to kind of do two things. One is decrease the speed and when you decrease the speeds, you also increase the severity of, of the crashes. I believe it's Portland or Seattle. I can't remember which one has implemented the twentieth plenty program and they did see a benefit. The one is the guess the, the reduction in crashes that two case studies said that they did experience from the the other is more of, you might call it a safety culture. So getting people used to driving slower. And you know, a lot of neighborhood streets, people. Some people view them as, you know, their neighborhood's speech, which is part of their neighborhood culture. Drivers that drive through those streets off, think of them as just a place, a way to get from point A to point B. And so I think twenty is plenty is to move it more toward, this is a shared space that you're sharing with it could be broken up into it could be broken up into three years. Let's say we implemented the project statewide over three years. However, there was just a, I think we had three PPBB meetings determining pilot. Two pilot neighborhoods that we'd be implementing twenty is planning. So which, which neighborhoods get the benefit first? This logistical committee problem. I can forward the two case studies, so if you'd like to see that.
Certainly wouldn't hurt. I appreciate the explanation. Thank you.
Alder Foster, go ahead.
Thanks, and I appreciate the question by Alder Furman. I I mean, I'm not sure where budget conversations will go this year, but I do think, I mean, maybe it's something we should even put on our October TPDB agenda to do a little bit more of a deep dive into that kind of proposal and initiative. I mean, obviously it's like, I'd like to have the money to be able to move forward swiftly, but we did just get the pilot program going. And I think in the community, there's still a lot of doubt about changing the speed limit signs generally. You know, some, I think you're about to share some of that information, maybe some of the positive results of that on, on Say East Washington. I think, you know, we just got the, the two pilot locations for the twentieth plenty program. Obviously, we don't have, I'm assuming we don't have any data to talk about, you know, actual impact. So and again, there were, you know, there, there were some conversations, I can't remember if it was at TC or here about, okay, well, you know, putting signs up is one thing. Are there other things we should be doing, could be doing also to reinforce that? And I think to just Alder Furman's point, like bang for the buck is, is six hundred thousand in signs. Like even, even in the context of Safe Streets Madison, is that the, like, could, could we use that six hundred thousand on other projects to improve bike safety? Or is sign it down all residential streets? Like, is that, is that net, is that going to be the best use of that, that six hundred thousand? So I, I just think I, given the size of the ask, it might be worth going in a little bit more detail about what we know, what we don't know. You know, why, why we think this is on the top of the list of those additional investments? And maybe just even also what, you know, what else? We could spend that money on related to traffic safety if not the, if not signage for that program. So maybe we could, yeah, do a little bit deeper dive yet next month, which could still help inform the, the discussion at the budget hearings, I think.
Our next meeting is October fourth and we can do that.
All right. Any further questions for Tom? From what he's presented? Seeing none. Thank you, Tom. We will then move on to our last item for the evening, Legis our six, seven, four, two, seven, BRT economic brief sheet.
Okay, yeah, so I'll go ahead and I'll provide a little bit of background. You know, the BRT is really one of the largest investments cities ever made. There's been quite a bit of public discussion, is it worth it? And the hurt business is going to help this. A lot of the discussion really hasn't been based on very much research. And so we've asked staff just to put together something that provides just some of the background. Now, every community that's implemented BRT is different. And so you can't, I don't think it's possible to say BRT causes this to occur. That won't cause this to occur in matter. But we can just provide some of the background of the studies saying that BRT probably can influence economics this way. Hill, Ritz Walker, Paradise Good Job helps provide just a high-level summary. Economic effects of BRT. Jobs, heavy BRT. And I wanted to find heavy BRT as ones with permanent stations and platforms, which represent a little bit more of commitment, infrastructure commitment to a corridor. And in these jobs and corridor, well, areas outside service area. Eugene thought several shift shared towards a corridor during the recession. Survey of thirteen BRT systems. The job skews towards higher middle wage jobs that gains also occurred in all areas. As far as development or redevelopment. Some systems see five major investment gains. This is Eugene. Think the number was, almost had to do a double hundred billion. Cleveland is probably the most often cited nine point five. So it can encourage redevelopment, propose the design best practices, which basically you know, is, is the heavy, you have investment in stations dedicated length and one of the quotes from one of the researchers, land development benefits will full future BRT are similar to those experienced long rail. There can be positive. System utilization, I think this is probably most common among development. All, I think almost all thirteen of the systems that we looked at experienced ridership gain. Some were considerable. One in Los Angeles was a little bit more modest. It stands a reason that if you invest in the get to see the game. Property values and retail sales. There's been quite a bit of research on the property values. Property values do increase. Increasing the values correlated directly to the distance from the BRT station. So this is actually a good and a bad because you're an owner, perhaps you'd like to see your property value increase, but so rent or not, maybe that's not a and then there has been some more case study evidence of retail sales increasing near high-quality bus expresses. So, you know, potential, potential economic impact of Metro Rapid. Generally, our system that's been proposed forms to the BRT line best practices, I think a lot of that is in part due to some of the modifications that approved by the TPBB, including center running. Right now, we are, we kind of raised us from a bronze level to over level system. Potential benefits to employment growth, employment resilience, which a lot of the studies cited, because a lot of the studies care the time period during the Great Recession. Transit utilization and then property value. High quality BRT design coupled with supportive land use and zoning policy could lead to investment within the corridor. Diminishment of the process to be carefully considered as they compromise some of the economic. So that's just a more of an information sheet. Kind of show what could occur in that.
Thank you, Tom. Any questions? I'm sorry, we actually do have one resolution of public comments. Bob Schaefer, see you're still with us. You may go ahead when you're ready.
Yep, I am still with you. Excuse me. A couple of comments on the BRT system that, excuse me, which I've followed you know, pretty well along the lines here. I've yet to see any type of ridership projection on it in terms of increase of ridership. I see the potential for a decrease of ridership over that corridor in the sense that Madison is not a city that is similar to many of the cities that were presented here in that Madison is in a ismus. And that many of the routes in the past would have bring people in from the underlying areas and then connect through being a part of the east-west corridor where riders could transfer easily from that. But then when it changed to the east-west corridor being BRT only, that I've not seen any factual evidence of how the riders that are from the outline areas are going to easily access the BRT buses without having to walk a block or more. And so I think that one of the things that is lacking is a lack of projected ridership. I think when we look at the current pandemic and the amount of virtual activity that's been taking place and the projected likelihood that some of that is going to continue, I guess I question what that ridership, how that's going to work out. And we also take into consideration the electrical bikes and the electric scooters and their availability on campus and how much that could affect the ridership. And that I just think that that it's been, in my opinion, we'll build it and they'll come. Because, and I say that because I haven't seen any projection of ridership that was in the previous representation of the original BRT plan. So I think that the, some of this stuff, and I have recommended earlier, that what they do is they take some of the buses and they simulate BRT today just to see what that is going to be attracted. And I'm not sure that a, any type of survey was done to the population of Madison. I don't mean just the metro riders. I mean, the population, because the people that I've talked to, most of them are not impressed with BRT. So I think that we can move ahead with this and maybe they'll come or maybe they won't. But I don't see any type of actual confirmation of data. And on the other side to that too, is that I have yet to see yet to see a transport, I mean, a BRT metro annual report for twenty twenty.
Thank you, Bob. Are there any questions for the speaker? Seeing none, questions for Tom? Still comments? All right, Tom, thank you for that. That's all we have for the evening, so I would entertain motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Thank you, Bob. Second, Alder Furman, all those in favor of adjourning the meeting for tonight, please unmute yourselves and say hi.
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 Suppose no. Chirp is unanimous. We are adjourned. Okay, everyone. Thank you for your time.